Dudley Marks, but not Dalton.
Good evening and welcome. I'd like to call as well to the Pennsylvania County Board of Supervisors Joint Meeting with Board of Supervisors on Tuesday, October fifteenth, two thousand twenty old, three P. M. The Board Meeting Room at thirty-nine Bangor Street, Southeast Chatham, Virginia. Mr. Cluston, would you call the role, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Dudley?
Present.
Mr. Height?
Yes.
Mr. Ingram?
Yes.
Mr. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Here.
Mr. Shaw, would you call your role, please?
Mr. Fitzgerald?
Yes.
Mr. Henderson is absent. Ms. Merricks?
Absent.
Mr. Mills?
There.
Mr. Moon?
Here.
Mr. Shields?
Present.
Mr. Dolls?
Moving to item three. Any items to be added to the agenda. Not hearing any, we'll move to item four. I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda. Motion by Mr. Ingram, second. Second by Mr. Tucker. Any further discussion? If none, we're ready to adjourn.
Okay.
Tighten up, move quick down.
Okay.
All right, motion carried, you have it. Moving to item five, on U-Bridge, School Division Presentation and Discussion, Dr. Mark Jones. Yes, sir. Dr. Jones, yes, sir.
Can I say something?
Yes, sir. Go ahead, Mr. Dolls.
I think it's important, we ask this, to y'all to see what we're doing and where we're at. This is what our construction, a lot of this is going to be on construction. And what we're one percent doing is more important than what's not doing. So I've asked y'all to kind of keep it all to you. Now, I think it's very important to tell me that you're in mind of the dozen practices, basically, of just being able to stay in on the heat, you know, let the day go on. So if there are any questions, y'all don't quite understand, please, freak out for me. If I do my stuff, I'll, um, okay.
Thank you.
Welcome, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, thank you all for having us. Mr. Dalton, Mr. Dolls, members of the Board of Supervisors, members of the school board, I'd like to present to you all some thoughts that we're having regarding athletics and kind of where we are right now. We have a PowerPoint that that will present, but as, as we begin, I'd like to talk about where we are. As you're aware, last year, we began implementing middle school sports. We were one of about four school divisions in the state that did not have middle school sports. And so we had parent interest, and so we began, we kind of dipped our toe in the water a little bit. We, last year, we offered volleyball for girls and basketball for boys, and it was very successful. If you went to any of the games, it was, it was packed, packed gym. I look at Mrs. Merrick's, her, her children are kind of that age, and so she was at several of the games. Just packed gyms and a lot of good parent support. This year, we, we, we went further, and this year, we offered cross-country golf. We offered, again, girls volleyball and cheer and boys' basketball. And so now, we're at a point where, again, it's very successful. We have a lot of parents at games. Kids doing very well, kids excited. So now, we're at a point where what's next? So what's next are the, the teams that need field space and really gym space. We, we've only offered boys' basketball and volleyball because for gym space. Girls' volleyball is during the fall time. Boys' basketball is, is during the winter. We haven't offered baseball, softball because just the competition for fields during the springtime. And soccer, soccer seems to be going fairly well with Southside Soccer and kind of juggling the logistics of finding fields for soccer. So we felt like we were okay, an okay place for that. But we're at a point for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, looking at can we offer softball and baseball? Can we offer football for, for the kids? So I want to kind of look at, Mr. Hudson has gotten with Dewberry. Dewberry has provided some, some drawings for us. So I've got those for you. I've got several slides. So this is Chatham Middle School. We'll walk through the different fields by school zones. This is Chatham Middle. If you look at this, this, the side note, Chatham Middle School will take both the asphalt pay, play areas behind the school. So if we were to build fields, we'd have to do away with those asphalt play areas. So if you look at the next, this is aerial view of Chatham Middle School. If you look at kind of the fields, look to your right, at the top right, that's the football field. That field would stay intact if we did something. The baseball field, the softball field, what we're using right now is kind of the far right. If you're familiar with that site, to the right of that, it drops off substantially to a kind of a gully. If you look at right behind the cross of the school, the pointing to the, to the right, that's a paved, a play area there that's paved. That's the area that, that would be the asphalt area that'd be taken. So we overlaid that onto, onto the site, and so this is what it would look like. So we'd have to reposition the, the baseball field to move the infield to the top as far, as opposed to the bottom. We'd put the softball field on the asphalt area, and the football field would, soccer field would stay intact. So that's Chatham. I'm going the wrong way here. All right, this, this is the high school. So at the high school, this is where we have the high school. Right now, a lot of our games are played on the softball field. If you go over there, most of the time, in, in the spring, summer, there's something going on, on at least a softball field there. But we've got, thank you all for helping us, I guess, ten years or so ago, with placing the track and the practice field. That's taken, taken a lot of pressure off the football field. Back when I coached there, the football field would be bare by the end of the year. And then we'd try to, when we tried to practice, we'd practice some baseball on that field. You recall, the softball field was fought to the far left that took part of the baseball of soccer, took part of the football soccer field. So now, we have the four fields there. We have a practice area at Chatham High School. This is Dan River. I get this going right here. I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Got it wrong way here. I'll figure it out. All right, so this, this is Dan River Middle. So we're proposing, looking at constructing a baseball field and a softball field. And to place it on that site, you have to build over top of the current football field. And that field has been there. In fact, we have that field named for a gentleman who's been there, who was there many years and just passed away, Allison Springs' father. That field's been there for years, but we'd have to lay a softball field on top of it. So this is the current site. If you look at the bottom corner to the, to the left, the football field is in the top part of that green, kind of boxed area. And in the back section there is a field with a bank. So we would have to take out the bank. And so when we lay it on top of this, and what it would look like. So we're doing some, some construction with sales tax referendum money on Kentuck. And we're going to use some of the field dirt, we're going to take some, a lot of the field dirt from that, and so we're hoping we can get a lot of that baseball field, some, a lot of that bank taken out, so we can construct a baseball field there. So we're hoping that will do a lot of the work for us on the baseball field. But if you look at the, the softball field, again, we've got to take part of the football field. And so doing that and kind of coordinating seasons around soccer and football may be a little difficult. And this is Dan River High School. Dan River High School doesn't quite have the, the facility space that we had at, availability at Chatham, but we do have a practice field. It's up close to our parking area. That's used for band, and it's kind of, it's a smaller area than we have at Chatham, but it's there that we practice on. But then we have the football, soccer, baseball, and softball fields there. So Dan Rivers Middle School is shown, football field. Again, the, the constraint is that you'd have to construct the softball field on top of the, the football field. Trying to look and see what else, next option. We have a second option that we could put the softball field at the elementary school, where the Parks Reg Field is located now. And that's, if you look at the Dan River site there, Kentuck is right above it to kind of the far right corner. And there are two softball fields there. You'd have to kind of work to be sure you had the dimensions right for softball field there, which would eliminate putting the softball field on top of the football field. And this is Gretna Middle School, Gretna Middle School. We build the three fields on the Gretna Middle School site. If you're familiar with Gretna Middle School, right behind the, the school, we have, if you look at the far, kind of the left quadrant, you see two fields there. There's two softball sized fields, maybe little league sized fields there. So what we'd have to do is we'd have to lay that on top of it, so we'd have to do away with those two fields. Reconstruct a larger baseball field. The softball field would lay on top of those fields, but would be placed differently. And then the football field would be close to the school. This is Gretna High School right beside it. Gretna High School probably has the least space of any of the, the schools as far as practice locations on the school site. We have a softball, baseball. If you look where the baseball field is, we've constructed with the help of U-Sports, Gretna U-Sports. There's a practice field kind of between the softball field and baseball field to bottom there. We've constructed a, a practice field there. But if you look at football, there's really no practice field for football. And then Tunstall, the Tunstall layout, we'd have to relocate. If, familiar with Tunstall, if you go behind Tunstall Middle School, there are two big fields, but they're, they're long fields. They're rectangular fields on different levels there, so it's quite a lot of grading work that would have to take place to all level it up. But that's, that's both the, the high school and, and middle school there. At the bottom is the middle school. And the fields that we're talking about are the far left quadrant there. So we lay it on top, would look something like this, with a baseball field to the furthest left, and then a softball field laid on top of a football field. And then, this is the high school location. We've got a, we have a practice field for, really, it's a baseball field and, and, and a football practice field to the far right side, and then we have a football, soccer, baseball, softball at Tunstall. So our, our question, and estimate, this is, this is really high-end cost, but to do everything that we would want to do, high-end would be twelve point five million dollars based upon estimates from Dewberry. We could come in, Mr. Hudson, we could come in, your thought under that?
I hope that we get this locked together. Like, they heard it over, some moved, just ready, it's part of the process. This is, this is like, I've dug out, it's already filled, of all the land.
This is, this would be first class here, with twelve point five million. We'd get in pretty much less than that. But we're just looking at, at how do we accommodate this if we're, if we're going to do this right now. Right now, we're having to juggle a lot of, of different practices and games to, to make it work. As we build this out, and we've seen the success of our middle school programs and having the numbers of kids coming out. If you want to do it the way we should, we, we just need to have additional fields. And then I have to have the, the bleachers and the dugouts first class, but we need fields, something the kids can play on. So that, that's where we're at now as, as we work towards next year, and if we plan for softball, baseball. This time, I'd, I'd like to open up any questions you may have.
Any questions, gentlemen? Dr. Jones?
Dr. Jones, thank you for that.
Yes, sir.
When I first came to the board, we had a dream, we had this in, but we talked about the Roger and Natalie's Sports Complex. So I'm like, Mr. Smith River, he's in Hickory County, Jack, and I'm still very, very familiar with that. I saw a lot of people that did travel sports, and they talked about it, forty-one cents, seven, might make forty thousand dollars in a weekend. But my dream, I'm telling you all, is to have something similar to like Avery North, where you have an indoor facility, we can have industrial kitchen, a four-unit residence at all of our schools according to Southside, Avereside. With respect to those, we'd say.
And where you could play basketball on the inside, soccer, I'm not soccer, volleyball, and a small concert venue. And then outside would be your softball, baseball, et cetera. So, you know, that's still a dream that I have, as well as at least one on, on this board. And so if we were to move forward with something of that magnitude, would it conflict with what you guys are proposing, or would that, or not? Or would it be something we could collectively work together on?
I think it'd complement. I, I think we could sit down and talk about it together and come up with a comple, a complimentary plan that could benefit both. Yeah. You know, a lot of places have these. A lot of places have the baseball, baseball facilities, almost like an, an X, have your fields around a central place. You know, you've got the, the soccer complex or football complex that.
And I was thinking about our graduations. I, I don't know, the times that I've rented Avery North is a thousand bucks a pop for a nonprofit. And if, you know, when you have your graduations, if you're having to pay a thousand per school, I, I don't know, but I, I'm just using it as an example, is that with the kind of complex that, that I would favor, that would be inclusive, and you wouldn't have to worry about going out and renting anything from anybody.
That'd be nice, yes.
And, and one more thing, on the economic development side, one thing that we hear time and time again, other than the need for housing, is recreational activity, right, Justin? And, and this would not only benefit our citizens, but our, our new neighbors as well. So, but I like the idea of the possibility of us coming together and talking extensively about that, because I'm sure we'll get some revenue sometime or another to, to make some good things happen. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Jones. So I see middle school here. What about the high school cost? Would not, would not be, right now, would not mean the high school cost. What we're doing is we're taking the pressure off the high schools right now. And really building a, a good feeder program for our high schools. I think our, looking at our high schools, I think if you go back at each of the sites, our high schools, I think, are pretty much, the land has been used.
Any, any available land at the high schools that we put fields on, Mr. Hudson?
I don't know. I think they have fields for all their schools. I would be excited to, Park Reg kind of unit, physicals kind of unit, council kind of unit, just don't have enough time to get everybody, thank you, thank everybody everywhere.
Okay. So, and I agree with Mr. Ingram here, back fourteen years ago, thirteen years ago, Justin. The county was pursuing a sports complex. I look, I mean, it's a, it's a huge number there, but not as big as it would have been back in the day if the county had moved forward with that. So looking for a place to put a sports complex, and you work it jointly with, you know, the school division, the board supervisors on the usage, and scheduling that when the schools are not using it, or the community's not using it for tournament plays and things like that, you know, from out of towners. I think it's a, a good investment of money, in my point of view, because I've actually worked on a project very similar to that, and that is one of the, it's, it's a highlight of the county, because you have people that are locating there, people that want to be there because of those sports. And it's not just the sports, but you have walking trails, you have pavilions on there. You have places where people can come and meet, so it's not just all about the sports. So you sep, separate those pieces on there, and it really makes for a very, very nice complex. Yeah, the money there is there, I mean, have you thought about phasing these fields in, or is this all at once type thing? Have you, have you did, done, have you done the, the cost comparisons between, you know, whether it would take, you know, what it would take to do all of those, or how long it would take to do maybe one or two or three? You know, this, this is where we are. This is, the numbers that we have right now is twelve, five. All that we've talked about is how can we draw that down? And we, we think we can do it considerably less. I, I think we could, we could do whatever we need to do to get it to work, you know, if we have to phase it. The issue becomes, if you phase it in, that it becomes, it, it's not, there's a fairness issue. One school site's going to get this before others. So that, that would be something we'd have to work through. Be nicer if you get it all at the same time, but that, that's probably a finance, you have to finance that. I've got the next slides, if you'd like to look. The next slides are our sales tax revenue money, and kind of give you all an idea of what we're, how we're utilizing that money. You know, if you look, I'm kind of, thoughts ahead, we're, we're using a lot of that money to do things that we need to do, like windows and HVAC, those types of things. They, roofs, we've, we've done roofs, but windows and HVAC, those are things that just have come to you, the old schools, and you've got to replace those things.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the presentation, Dr. Jones. Couple of comments. I want to echo the sentiments of my colleagues about the sports complex. And one of the things that we probably need to do is, is have another joint meeting and talk about that, and figure out a way forward. And I'd like to see it go in somewhere over next to the Ag Center and, you know, incorporate not only, you know, the, the youth sports, but also, you know, we have a lot of equestrian people in the area, and they travel quite a lot. And then there are people that will come into the Ag Center for different venues and events. But yet and still, there's nowhere, the, the biggest problem is, there's no restaurants in that area. Everything shuts down, and the events are over, and then people have to drive to Danville, Lynchburg to eat, that sort of thing. So we kind of need to think about the logistics there. My, my second comment is, and it might be more in line of a question, and this is for the supervisors as well as the school board. Down in Gretna, I, I think you stated that they're out of space at the high school. There is a field that the county owns right across from the old Northside High School. No, that's not Elba Park. This is, this is, this is the old baseball diamond there that's poorly maintained. I think, Mr. Dolls, you're aware of it. County owns it. And I, I think that that might be something that you might want to look at in terms of just refurbishing of that particular piece of property. And I think the county needs to maybe take a look at, you know, going in there and at least dressing it up a little bit. So I would be in favor of that.
We'll, we'll do that. Is it baseball size or softball size, you know?
I think it was baseball size.
I think it was, the problem was working real well with their kids. They used to be models, like, they, they were on the road. Because I had that they were, they were small things alone.
Yep.
And that, that's what would have happened if we developed a little, that's right land, the D-ball, the, the young ones can play on those two little fields, they're all connected. So we, we live with them, that's bigger field, so they can still play D-ball on the little fields, but, you know, if you had, had, had other place, had smaller fields, had fresh off, I don't think you should have been saying.
That, that, that's fine. I, I just want to see it put it to some type of use. Right. It's, if memory serves me, it's a little over seven acres there, so that's, that's a pretty good size.
Then on, then on the side of, back where the whole football field, they have some big, they have some, yeah, everyone's too old. Northside, they don't think, you don't think they all, they don't, they don't.
Elba, I think. I think Elba Baptist Church bought that.
Well, I knew it was football field back in 1990.
The biggest thing too, we often started, twice I did, we had a different place, a little lane, and instead of screaming, you know, you need some more playing, you need some more play, but a field and, and what you gotta realize, two, this was right about 20 years behind, of course, when this tried it, but that's the way things go. So we're really at four bases, we're there. Arce, JV, middle, in our red program. Yeah. That's the four bases. If, if we implement, we go back on middle school, uh, middle school based on softball, because you talk about purpose strain, once we implement that, Reds don't really have a game. Because unfortunately, I don't know many counties or cities around, we really don't have any, what you call, Red, being a sport park and Red, let them out. It's always going to join out there between the high school, middle school, and the Red, as it should be. But it's not something, you know, we really get to a place, so it's going to be crucial if we implement baseball and softball, you know, it's going to be more. It would be great if we could do this and, like we talked about as far as, also a site, you know, sports complex, because you really, it's very going to be difficult to implement. And we even be touched on Jews, and I don't even know if we've got space at the high schools with Jews or not, but that, I mean, that's another, you know, need. But I, I just want you all to know that the importance of, we're just going to get real tight here, if, if next year we decide to have middle school sports, it's going to rev it up strain on Justin and Paul's, which really is.
Any more questions?
No, sir. Okay. May I share just a few more slides, give you all an update on where we are with sales tax referendum? And I've asked Mr. Hudson to, to be here and, kind of fill in the blanks. So this is prior to, in July of, in June, the revenues that we've generated, about 3.5 million dollars per year, estimated about 65 million dollars over, over 20 years. These are some projects that we do, did prior to receiving the funds. So we had some state capital monies that we used in, in year in money. So we put on roofs at, at four of our schools. And roofs are not inexpensive, they just cost. And so we spent $5 million there to put on roofs. I think, Mr. Hudson, are we, how, how far along are we with roofs right now?
We've got, well, we got all those, and we're, we're pretty good taking on roofs now. We have a couple of old, blood jobs that we've done, so most schools are pretty good taken.
So we, we have, we've done right much on our roofs. But this is, so this past summer, we began using sales tax referendum money. First priority, if you recall, for the sales tax referendum was the safety of our schools. And so we have built 14 security vestibules at a cost of $6 million. I believe early on, Mr. Hudson, if I recall, we estimated this to be about half that.
Exactly.
And just the inflation, inflationary cost drove that up, doubled, doubled the cost there. We also are enclosing the corridors, are enclosing the gym sidewalks with corridors, so kids don't have to walk outside, and we're doing that at five of our elementary schools. Kentuck Elementary School is next, we're going to add 12 classrooms there at almost $9 million. And then coming up, as part of the second priority, are HVAC and window replacements at six elementary schools at a cost of about $24 million. That's a big piece of, of what we're doing, is just things that we've got to do because the buildings are getting older. Not adding any space to the buildings, but just, just doing things that we need to, to do to update them. And then we're doing additions, the third priority additions at Stony Mill, Southside and Union Hall, at about $11 million. And then fourth priority, Mount Airy and Hurt Elementary Schools, adding classrooms there. And then fifth priority is additions to Chatham Elementary School. And those total, the first five priorities are about $60 million. That takes a good chunk of, of what we're going to get. And so then we have left the Career Technical Center, and we've just had a request from Economic Development to, to put into place, if you recall, probably 10, 15 years ago, we had building trades. Building trades have come back, and we're, we're looking at, we need people who know how to frame a house, people who know how to wire a house. So we've, I've tasked our Director of, of Career and Technical Education for next year to see if we can have some type of building trades program in place for next year. Just that, that, that's additional classroom. We think we can do it in one of the mobile units out back. But, you know, as we add programs, that's going to be additional cost to that, that school. So it, option A was 42,000 square feet at about $19 million. Option B was 12,000 square feet at about $5.5 million. So that's, that's kind of where we are with sales tax referendum money, putting it to good use, but it's, it goes much quicker than, than it would have four years ago. So any questions you all have about sales tax referendum?
So, Dr. Jones, how many mobile, oh, I'm sorry. How many mobile units do you have across the schools or that you're, you know, still occupied?
We had 26 mobile units, 25 we were using at our last count, which was a couple of years ago. So that's what we're using today.
How, I'm just curious, how old are they?
Oh.
Are they in need of replacement? And, and, and...
You and I probably, you and I probably set in those classrooms.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I'm doing, I'm doing this for the citizens. And do they have, and this may sound like a stupid question, but do they have restrooms in there, or do they have to go outside of those mobile units to go into the standalone building?
I think, few of them have, most, few of them have restrooms, most of them don't. It, it's based upon the kids that were in those classrooms, is that correct, Mr. Hudson?
So a lot, a lot of those do not have. So they have to, the students have to leave and then go outside and then come back in?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So that's all I've got about that. Yeah, huge numbers up here. And the last thing is, how much tax revenue are you getting in right now?
About 3.5, 3.5 million a year.
Okay. Now, you've expended that this year?
What, what we do is we're, we've taken out a literary loan of about $26 million, and so we will use sales tax referment, referendum money to pay that back.
Hey, what, what are you doing to the planetarium, and is there any possibility of ever bringing it back? Us old people would love to see it again.
You know, what we're doing is, it, it's leaking, and so we're repairing the leaks in the roof. As far as finding that old equipment, it's non-existent. We, when, back in about 2000, 2002 or 2003, we tried to do something with the equipment, and it was outdated at the time. And so at that point, it was determined that we could not find equipment to run that planetarium.
Any more questions, gentlemen?
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Dr. Jones.
Yes, sir.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. As I have met with different ones and seen different school division, talked with them, and I know last summer at our governor's school, all the schools came in without children on buses that had air conditions in them. And I thought about our children traveling long distance, and if we need some funding to put air on some of the new buses maybe, or some of the existing buses. Not all at one time, but maybe some extra funding could be found to help put some air on these buses, because some of our children, especially, not especially, but the babies, you know, they traveling a long distance, some of them. And in the summertime, it's the temperature to get, keep going up. It's hot on those buses. So I would like some consideration for that. Thank you.
Can I, can I say? Yeah. So when you look at what this, what this 1% sales tax is doing for us, we put, doing a lot of work on old buildings, and that's great because it needed them. We're also trying to get rid of mobile units to get, you know, brick and mortar classrooms, so it's all attached to the school and the students don't have to go outside in the weather and all of that. But, but what it's not doing is, it's not going to fund everything that the school system needs over the 20-year life of the 1%. You know, as we, as we move forward, you know, other things are going to come up. And y'all know the Career Tech Center over here has really been a, you know, a plus for this county. You know, we have people coming in all over visiting. And, and we really need to put that in a strategic plan, and y'all, the funding for the strategic plan, right, that we can expand that. I mean, we have more and more students that want to go, and we limited in space, we limited to the number of students. And I think it's a shame to have what we have and yet still be limited. But you saw numbers, it's, it's going to take a lot, but it needs the big addition. We need the classroom space over there if we want to continue to do that. And I think for this county, it's like you're talking about the, the sports complex and what it does for bringing people in, this is our future. And, and I think trades is going to become even more of our futures as we move forward. So just kind of keep that in your mind as y'all sit down and start planning out y'all's strategic plan long-term, and, and when you look at your funding coming in, if you get additional funding, just put that in the back of your mind that we really need to look at expanding that career school over there, because it'll pay as many dividends for y'all as about anything else you can build, I believe.
Thank you.
With my children, we're on the road every weekend with travel sports. And so we're seeing different complexes everywhere and the money that, the revenue that they're bringing in. A couple that I would encourage you to check out is in Independence, Virginia. They had three ball fields last summer that we went to, or last fall that we went to. And in talking with the director, they said just within one year of bringing in different sports competing on the weekends, they raised enough revenue to build two more fields that they didn't have to dip in to get loans or anything from, just from the outsiders coming in. Another one is Rock Hill, South Carolina. During the week, that town is very similar to us. It has small industry, almost very little compared to, kind of like what we were in Danville. And then on the weekends, it turns to sports, and it brings in three or four different types, and that's what funds that area. And they have really grown tremendously. I mean, our kids are growing exponentially in their interest. And although picture perfect, we would have this at every school, but I really think the smart economic decision would be building a sports complex that we could, all of your schools could use, Parks and Rec could use, plus you could bring in the revenue on the weekends as well. And I think you would see that that grow quite quickly. One thing that we can adjust is timing. You know, Parks and Rec builds our middle school programs, middle school builds our high school programs. And if we can just work together with Parks and Rec and the school system, timing is a key issue. We've made it work in the past with offering middle school softball and baseball, not technically sanctioned middle school softball and baseball, but we've made it work. But what we're struggling with now is the timing of sharing fields, and we can adjust that ourselves, because if we work with Parks and Rec, we can delay seasons so that we can use what's here right now and concentrate on building that sports complex that would benefit not only the school system but would also benefit the county as well.
Yeah, I have another comment. I was at a meeting over the past weekend, and I know, and I'm in favor of the data center. But I understand that they uses a lot of water, and I'm just wondering, because someone was talking about they had other sources of being able to cool those with generators or whatever they are. And if we're going to draw these millions of gallons of water from our sources, what impact would that have on this surrounding wells and thing? Because a lot of the homeowners use wells, and I understand they could draw some of these wells dry. So have y'all considered another alternative for cooling those, whatever you call them, generators or, or, or data center turbines or whatever? Are they in consideration for that?
The way I understand it, data center, uh, every season, where it's at is free knowledge of the city water supply. Uh, would be united.
No, not at the well, but...
They would be pulling water from the city water system, which, the city water system has a pretty large capacity, you know, they don't, you know, they pull it out of the Dan River.
And you don't think it'll have an impact on the county?
It should not. Because it's, that, that's, that's right there, close enough for, you have a water line already running up 58, and they'll just tap on, tap onto that water line.